Bloom.
Here.
Ms. Hill, can you please summarize executive session?
The board discussed personnel, including but not limited to agenda items, student matters and matters falling under attorney-client privilege.
Do you have any correspondence?
Uh, yes. Uh, the board received an invitation to the Sayerville Historic Society's 50th Anniversary Gala, which was emailed to you on Monday, and there was an anonymous letter regarding the Sayerville Burrows pilot that was delivered to board member tonight.
Well, I also have a piece of correspondence, so if you'll bear with me, I will very proudly read this letter. Dear Mrs. Bloom, congratulations to the Sayerville Public Schools Bombers Beyond Cafe program for being one of four entries selected for recognition through the 2024 Innovations in Special Education Award Program. Your entry was selected from among 27 programs offered by public and private schools as an example of a successful creative effort that enables special needs students to achieve their potential. The New Jersey School Boards Association and the ASAH, serving the private special education community since 1974, will recognize the programs designated for honors during a video presentation held in conjunction with Special Education Week in New Jersey, May 12th through the 18th. You will be notified when the date of the video is available for viewing. In addition to the video, winning programs will also be featured in New Jersey School Board Association, School Board Notes, and School Leader Magazine, and you will receive a plaque in the mail. A 2024 Innovations in Special Education winner designated badge is attached to this email for you to post on your website, and we have done that. In the next few days, we will reach out to you for the taping of the video, and we have designated Mr. Vanderbeek to do that video acceptance. And the letter is signed by Dr. Purnell, who is the Executive Director of School Boards, and John Mulholland, who is the Executive Director of ASAH. So we are very proud to share that with you.
Good job, David.
Okay, now we need approval of the minutes from the last meeting on the 19th and special meeting on April 2nd, so we need a motion.
So move second.
Approval of the minute.
Well, Ms. Hill.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Fernandez?
Yes.
Mrs. Napolitano?
Yes.
Mrs. Pabon?
Yes.
Ms. Pylock?
I have to abstain from the 19th since I was not present, and yes, on April 2nd.
Okay. And Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes. Okay, and now we move to the handsome young gentleman.
Thank you.
Now, we've been the handsome older gentleman.
Thank you.
Wish I had hair like that.
Okay, Sean, you're up.
Thank you. Good evening, board. Here are the events that have been happening at SWMHS over the past weeks. Students of Ms. DeLucia's ninth grade world history class traveled to the Metropolitan Museum of Art to see works studied inside of their curriculum. Students in Ms. Derning's environmental class dissected owl pellets, and students in Ms. Apollo's human anatomy class dissected sheep hearts. Our teacher band, The Prestige, has been performing jazz music every Friday outside the theater before first period each morning. Their music energizes the main foyer as students enter school and creates a welcoming and exciting atmosphere as they prepare for the variety show. The Winter Guard placed first in their competition last Saturday and have advanced to the championships coming up this weekend. Students from the Odyssey of the Mind Problem Five Rockin' World Detour have advanced to the Odyssey of the Mind World Championships in Iowa from May 21st to the 24th. Moving on to sports, baseball is three and four, coming off a nine-to-one win over Perth Amboy. Boys golf is oh and three, boys lacrosse is three and two, boys tennis is one and four. Flag football is one and oh after beating South Brunswick 20 to 13 on Sunday. Girls golf is one and five, girls lacrosse is two and one, track is two and oh, and softball is currently four and one with a 10-to-1 win over Colonia on Saturday. In terms of upcoming events, the National Honor Society induction ceremony will be held tomorrow evening at 7:00 PM. The junior class is presenting the variety show Friday night at 7:00 PM. Students and faculty will be showcasing their amazing talents, including performing music and sports acts. Student Council Board elections will be held on Friday, so all students, please show up to the polls during lunch to use your voting power. Sayerville's Day of Dialogue, Way to Peace, will be held on Thursday night in the cafeteria. Students with ties to countries experiencing armed conflict or those interested in addressing and solving global crises have been invited to speak about their issues and engage in discussion with students of diverse backgrounds. The National English Honor Society is hosting a book drive outside the auditorium from April 24th to the 26th. Next week, the Student Council has planned a spirit week leading up to the pep rally. On Monday is Teacher-Student Swap Day, on Wednesday is Adam Sandler Day, on Thursday is Ryman Costumes, Friday is bomber blue with sunglasses. And during the school day leading up to pep rally, there will be a school-wide rock-paper-scissors competition with the championship rounds held during the pep rally. Students will be given a single necklace in the morning. They will play a game of rock-paper-scissors supervised by a faculty member during class periods of the beginning and end to gradually accumulate necklaces with a winner-take-all strategy. Those within the top 10 by the end of the school day will compete at pep rally for a cash prize. And that is all I have for you. Thank you, board.
Thank you very much, Sean.
Now, which Adam Sandler are you going to dress up like?
I'm having a really tough time deciding, right? Because my other idea was to do Adam Sandler during Ryman Costumes Day, right? So I was thinking just like really, really baggy shorts, a really baggy top and the backwards hat. I wish I had a little bit longer hair, though, so kind of like flip off the top.
You did have a little bit longer hair.
I know, I know, and I was ill-prepared for this. I should have taken into account.
Oh, that's outstanding. I love it.
Maybe. I like the short, though.
You gotta go-
Not quite that short.
Happy Gilmore. You gotta go-
I'm not getting there yet.
You gotta go with Happy Gilmore, though, I mean.
Maybe. That's a good idea. Might have taken into account.
Waterboy might work too.
What genre are you up to? What are you trying to be?
Adam Sandler.
Adam Sandler.
Oh, by the way, where is Adam? Does anybody know where Adam Sandler is from?
Isn't he from New Jersey?
He's from where I was born, Manchester, New Hampshire.
You're wrong.
That answers everything.
Two famous people for New Hampshire.
Little Nicky.
Okay, thank you.
Outstanding as always, Sean. Outstanding.
Good evening, Board of Education members and administrators. My name is Ashton Fondle, SMS Student Council Board of Education representative. The Student Council will be collaborating with the Community Service Club and Class Council and hosting a spring cleanup within the next couple of weeks. Students will clean up the SMS recess fields and surrounding areas. The Student Council will be selling eighth-grade promotion signs. A bomber blast will be going out shortly with artwork. The Sayerville School District will be honored by CASA, court-appointed special advocates of Middlesex County Edit and Invent, TOES 2024, on May 7th at the Chateau Grande. CASA is honoring the district for the middle school's community service club and support and collection of their gift drive for foster children for over a decade. Doreen Consolano, Community Service Advisor, will be present to accept the award on the behalf of the district. The Music Department is excited to host on May 31st. This event is fun, full of talents, laughs, and making memories. We hope to see you there. The Spring Concert will be held on May 16th at Sayerville War Memorial High School. Harlem Wizards game versus the Thunderstruck Bombers teachers team took place on Thursday, April 4th, at the high school gym. Thank you to all participants and fans for a successful night. Eighth-grade semi-formal dance is Friday, May 10th. The National Junior Honor Society induction ceremony will be held on Thursday, April 25th, 2024, at 6:30 in the evening. The ceremony will take place in the Sayerville Middle School Blue Room. Thirty-eight members of SMS FBLA attended the State Leadership Conference at Keene University on April 8th. Twenty-one of these students placed in the top four and qualified to go to the National Leadership Conference in Orlando, Florida from June 28th to July 3rd. Messinette is so proud of these students and can't wait to see how they do at NLC. Now on to the Sayerville Middle School Athletics. The Sayerville Middle School softball middle school te- oh, the Sayerville softball middle school team is off to a hot start, 1-0 after defeating North Brunswick in a walk-off fashion last Thursday in the bottom of the last inning. On Wednesday, the blue team will open their season at home against Piscataway, and the gray team will play at home on Friday. Coach Vasquez and Coach Eacher are very proud of all their girls and are very excited to go get some more games underwear this week. Middle School Track had their first meet last Friday. While they don't score in meets, everyone ran well, and that's all.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Ashton?
May 31st is duets. Is that what you said?
Yeah.
31st.
That's duets?
Yeah.
What are you singing?
I don't know what they're singing. They just sing about-
Oh, you.
I'm not doing it.
You're a leader. You gotta get out there. No? All right.
I don't sing. I don't think I don't sing.
Okay, thank you, Ashton. Thank you, Sean.
Great job, Sean. Great job, Ashton. As always, gentlemen.
Good night.
A lot better.
He didn't do the Yankee thing, Sean.
We'll get to the Yankee.
You're walking good, bud.
Feel so much better.
Yep, you definitely look it.
Okay, um, now for the president's comments. The only comment I have to make is that on Thursday evening, Middlesex County School Boards Association will be sponsoring our Unsung Heroes banquet that is held at the Old Bridge High School, and Sayerville is very proud of the two students who are being honored. Can I say their names now? Is it okay? Okay. Lillian Heidelberg and Riva Barbaria are our two students who are being honored as unsung heroes, so I will see them Thursday night.
Can't wait.
Whether they like it or not. Okay. Vice President?
Lillian, I'm talking to you. Congratulations to the, um, to the members of the Sayerville War Memorial High School Odyssey of the Minds team who competed recently at the New Jersey State Odyssey of the Mind Tournament. The Problem Five Rockin' World Detour team consisted of Quinn Guerra, Lillian Heidenberg, Marissa Mandola, Daniel Johnson, Abdul Khan, and Jane Lee. Took first place, won a state championship, and earned an opportunity to represent Sayerville in the New Jersey at the Odyssey of the Mind World Finals at Iowa State University from May 20th to the 25th. The Problem Two AI Tech No Arts team consisted of Presha Vanishnav, Gia Modi, Aradu Bagalapal, Nicholas Bernardi, and Krish Pippalia earned fourth place. Congratulations to the members of the past and present SWHMS Theater Society, who were recently nominated by Montclair State University for their Foxy Awards for the 2023 Production of the Little Mermaid. And that is it.
Thank you. Okay. Any presentations tonight?
No.
No presentations. Okay. We will move on now to board discussion. Uh, Mr. Smith is not here for finance and infrastructure. Aaron, would you mind?
At the Finance and Infrastructure Meeting on April 9th, the board discussed updates to the referendum projects. At this point, we only have one more project left to go out to bid, and we also updated on infrastructure projects. Um, right now, the stadium lighting is still pending and waiting on parts, and we still are waiting on one more part for the district HVAC upgrades that were done, were started last year, and then that will be complete. That's it.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Hill. Um, next we have personnel. Ms. Pylock?
Yep. Uh, the Personnel Committee met earlier this evening where we discussed the openings for both certified and non-certified staff. Uh, we discussed our upcoming job fairs in May and April, and that pretty much sums it up.
Thank you. Uh, once again, Middlesex County School Boards, I already gave you that information. Ms. Napolitano, anything for Med Services?
No, none of this.
Okay. Uh, at this time, we will open for public participation on agenda items only. Okay, seeing none. We will close. Dr. Labby, take it away.
If I can bring your attention to finance, numbers 16 and 17, which you can find on page three and four, we're asking you to approve the purchase of technology subscriptions and licensing for the 2023-2024 school year in the total amount of $96,180 and security hardware items in the amount of $94,332. And that's all from CDW Government, and that's through our Ed Services Commission Cooperative Purchase and Pricing Contract. Number 38, which you can also find on the addendum, we're asking you to award, Ms. Smith, uh, Ms. Hill just mentioned it, we only have one to go, but so we're asking you to award the bid for mechanical upgrades, the HVAC, at the Eisenhower Elementary School and the Woodrow Wilson School to unit temp mechanical degrees. And obviously, they were the lowest bidder on bids that were opened on April 12th, and that is in the amount of $9,378,000, and that's, of course, to be paid for through the bond referendum. Any questions on those items as well as any other items that are on finance and infrastructure?
Yeah, I have a question on, uh, professional services, the Helen Conti MS provides psychological evaluations. Why are we increasing it? Is there-
So we have a replacement position that we could not fill using a vendor, so she's helping us do the evaluations, and we have an internal case manager filling the case management piece of it.
Oh, so just an overall-
Right, and the leave of absence was extended.
The what? I'm sorry?
The leave of absence was extended.
Okay.
So we extended that.
Got it. Thank you, David.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none. I'll bring your attention to student achievement. Numbers two and four, which you can find on page 13 in the addendum, we're asking you to approve long-term suspensions for several students. Any questions on those or any other items on student achievement? Okay, moving along to governance. Let's begin with number two, which you can find on page 13. We're asking you to approve revisions to Board of Education Policy 5570, Sportsmanship and Policy Regulation and Regulation 8660, Student Transportation, and that's for a second reading and adoption this evening. Number four, which you can find on page 13, we're asking you to approve revisions to the 2023-2024 School District Calendar, which make the last day of school for both students and staff Monday, June 24th, 2024. Number five, which you can find on page 13, we're asking you to approve revisions to the 2024-2025 School District Calendar, which changes the Juneteenth School Holiday from June 20th, which is a Friday, to June 19th, 2025. There are also some other formatting changes on that calendar. And number six, which you can find on page 13, we're asking you to approve the 2024 Summer Hours for Administrators, Secretaries, Technicians, and Technology Engineers. Any questions on those items or anything else on governance? Okay, seeing none. Personnel, we do have that bittersweet time. We're approaching the spring, and normally during the spring, we have to say goodbye to some very special staff members in our district, and we have four that we have to say goodbye to but congratulate on well-deserved retirements. They would be Sheila Berman, who is a special education teacher at the high school, Lisa Green, who is a second-grade teacher at the Truman School, Marie Basile, who is a cafeteria manager cook at the middle school, and Donna Midgley, who is an administrative secretary in central office. The first three will be retiring effective July 1st, and Ms. Midgley will be retiring effective May 1st. And as we always do, I'd like to say a few things about some of our incredible staff members that have decided to go on to bigger and better things outside of Sayerville, and we're so proud of them for that. Maria Basile. Maria has served the students and the faculty of Sayerville for the past 28 years in our Food Services Department. Her hard work, dedication, and the total number of meals she has been a part of may never be matched or even known. Thank you, Maria, for always supporting the entire Food Services Department with constant positivity and encouragement. Your dedication has set the bar for the entire staff. It is with the sincerest appreciation we wish you a happy and a healthy retirement with your family. And again, I always talk about on a personal note, I've had the privilege of knowing many of our staff members, and Maria is one of them, and, uh, she joined a number of us during Be Strong Sayerville during the pandemic. Maria was instrumental in making meals for us as we were delivering them through Sayerville. And I'll always remember the incredible smile she would come in with every day and, and, and work, you know, fastidiously to help us provide those meals. And I had the privilege once again to work with her at the middle school when I served as the interim principal there a couple of years ago, and again, I just was delighted to have the opportunity to work side by side with her in, in, in the cafeteria and so forth. She's such an incredible worker and a great leader, and she's going to be sorely missed. Lisa Green. Ms. Lisa Green has been a dedicated Truman School teacher for 32 years. For over three decades, she provided countless opportunities for her kindergarten, first, and second-grade students to learn and grow and develop. Lisa has been given many accolades and awards for her hard work and enthusiasm, both inside and outside of the classroom. The American Legion Lenape Post 211 honored Lisa with a certificate of appreciation for her patriotic endeavors. If you don't know, Lisa is a strong advocate for our veteran community, and she goes above and beyond to make our veteran community feel as they should thanks and appreciated for what they've done. She was the, she was awarded the Governor's Educator of the Year Award in 2001, 2002. In addition, Ms. Green is a current member of the past president of ADK. She has written and secured numerous grants to provide memorable cultural and patriotic events for the students and community. The events that she has organized for Truman School are for our local veterans and will always remain a source of pride for not only the school, but the entire district. We hope she returns as an honored guest for future years. Truman School's patriotic activities will undoubtedly continue with the devoted committee that she has created, but they just won't be the same without Lisa Green. As Lisa begins the next chapter of her life, we want to take this time to wish her well. We would like to thank Ms. Green for all that she has done for the students, staff, and community of Sayerville. We congratulate Ms. Green on her retirement and hope that it is filled with joy, health, and of course prosperity. And on a personal note, again, I've had the opportunity to, to know Lisa since I've come into the district, and she's always been an incredibly positive person. The first thing you notice about her is her adoration for the kids that she serves so impeccably. And of course, again, the amount that she puts into not only her students, but the school community and the greater Sayerville community is, is remarkable. Donna Midgley. It is with great respect and admiration that we acknowledge Donna Midgley's retirement from the Sayerville Public Schools. Over the years, Mrs. Midgley has served our children and staff in a variety of roles, beginning with Support Secretary for the Transportation Department. She then quickly transitioned to a secretarial role in the middle school. In this capacity, Ms. Midgley was a stabilizing force, implementing seamless office-based systems to ensure that students, staff, and parents were serviced thoroughly and efficiently. Mrs. Midgley's next role was to provide administrative support to the Pupil Services Department. In this capacity, Mrs. Midgley emerged to administer efficient systems for home instruction, bedside instruction, purchasing, and special education placements. Further, Ms. Midgley was a confidant, was, was a confidant for our child study team members and a reliable presence for Mr. Naster. In fact, it was here that Mrs. Midgley proved incredibly skilled at doing all the work, something that she and Mr. Naster would tell anyone who would listen, even if they really weren't listening. It was also in this capacity that we noticed that Mrs. Midgley was a fierce defender of the special services budget. Requisitions were processed, bills paid, accounts depleted, calls out loud to the tune of, "David, we need money." This was the fiscal sound of music coming from Donna's desk for many years. It is for all these reasons that a void will be felt without Mrs. Midgley at the helm of the Special Services Department. Therefore, we reluctantly let her go, but we wish her a happy and healthy retirement. And again, I've also had the opportunity to, to work with Mrs. Midgley on a number of different capacities, and she's always been a joy. She's very bubbly, always brings a smile to your face, and she does have an acumen for special services business, and she will be the first to let you know that. So she will be sorely missed by me. Just having her around was a pure delight. And again, we, we can't thank her enough for her outstanding service to the students, particularly students with disabilities, and our entire district. And last, but absolutely certainly not least, Sheila Berman. Sheila Berman has dedicated the last 22 years of her life to Sayerville Public Schools. She has been a beacon of hope and support for countless students, families, and colleagues, particularly students with disabilities. Her tireless effort has, has touched the lives of so many, leaving an indelible mark on our school and, on the high school and the school community. Sheila first worked at the middle school for five years. Here, she was an in-class support teacher for history and geography, and then a transition life skills teacher. Transition and life skills would be where Sheila would shine and leave her mark on the community. She wrote countless curriculum guides and quickly became the expert in this area. Advocating for access and equality, she knew the importance of building relationships and fostering partnerships at all levels. In 2008, she transferred to the high school, working as an English teacher and a transitions teacher. Under her guidance, students became active and involved, involved members of the high school community. She advocated to fully include students with disabilities in the high school, including social and extracurricular inclusion experiences. Her transition students raised autism awareness through pen selling. With her coordination, students linked up with the baseball team to sell lemonade at their home games. Student learned, students learned the skills of following a recipe, using a calculator, and building the stand through basic carpentry skills. Through her vision, the transition students made appearances on high school television production set and news program and sold snacks and coffee during the extended school year program. This would essentially be the original Bombers Brew. In 2012, the district was awarded the Innovation in Special Education Award due to Sheila's work with the transition program. Her vision allowed students to take leadership roles in many charitable innovations. Additionally, she received the Woman Who Should Be Famous on the Katie Couric Show in 2013. As a transitions coordinator, she became the go-to for all things post-high school life. She met with all our special education seniors, learning more about each of their goals for the future, then found information and ways to make their aspirations a reality. If a student wanted to be a vet, tech, or a chef, Sheila would certainly find out the program and the latest on those occupations. Finally, her relationship with colleagues was also very important to her. At department meetings, she always spoke up and asked questions, trying to help her peers. Her passion, expertise, and kindness have left an indelible mark on all of us. We will miss her presence dearly and daily. We take solace in knowing that her influence will continue to resonate with us for many years to come. Her legacy will continue to inspire and guide us in our mission to foster more inclusive and compassionate worlds for our students with disabilities. This is not just the end of a career, but the culmination of a journey marked by dedication, empathy, and unwavering commitment to her students. And again, on a personal note, Sheila has been someone in this district that I've not only known and loved, but admired and revered. She's, she's exactly what I described, and we will miss her dearly. She has been instrumental in making our special services programs what they are today. And we can't thank her enough for everything that she's done for us, but we wish her nothing but the best in her retirement. I know she has much to do with her grandchildren, and she's looking forward to it.
Thank you, Dr. Labby.
Okay, so moving along, numbers 10 and 11, as well as 33, which you can find on page 20 in the addendum, we're asking you, as we always do, to hire new certified and non-certified staff for this school year. Number 12, which you can find on page 21, we're asking you to also approve the transfer of some non-certified staff for this school year. Number 18, we're asking you to approve staff to perform science tutoring at the middle school. You can find that on page 22. Number 19, which you can find on page 23, we're asking you to approve staff to work in the Advanced Placement Summer Boot Camp from July 1st uh, through August 1st on an as-needed basis, and that, of course, is dependent on enrollment. Number 20, we're also asking you to approve staff to perform summer IEP work. It's crazy that we're already talking about the summer. You can find that on page 23, and you can see the attachment. And number 25 and number 26, you can find in the addendums, we're asking you to approve the suspension with pay for two employees. And 27 through 29, uh, which you can also find in the addendum, we're asking you to approve the termination of three employees. the termination of three employees. And that concludes my report.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Labby. Okay. We'll now need Board approval for agenda items, please.
Second.
Ms. Hill?
So I have Mrs. Napolitano and Mr. Callahan. Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Fernandez?
Yes.
Mrs. Napolitano?
Yes.
Mrs. Cobone?
Yes.
Ms. Pylock?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
And Mrs. Bluh?
Yes.
Okay. We will now open to public for any items that anyone would like to discuss. Please come to the microphones, state your name and your address, and let us hear what you have to say.
Good evening. My name is Jeannie Devine. I'm a resident of Saraville and a parent, and I want to briefly speak about and make a request about Policy 5756. One of my concerns about Policy 5756 is that the school staff keeps it confidential if a child changes their name and/or gender as young as the age of five. So the school will notify a parent if their child is sick or gets into a fight at school but does not notify a parent if the child changes their name and/or gender. In addition, the school creates a separate file under the student's new name, and the child's parents have no knowledge that this other file even exists. As a parent, I find this very alarming, and I would therefore like to request that the Saraville Board of Education bring to a vote the rescinding of Policy 5756. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm following her suit. My name is Kim Lindley. I'm a former Saraville resident, former special education teacher, and 5756, I just wanted to compare and contrast with 5756 with FERPA, and 5756, like she was saying, gives a student the ability to make their decisions, and there's a variety of stages at which we know the students are versus elementary, middle school, and high school. And the elementary student, one of their favorite people are their teachers, they're with them all day, and their parent. And another thing is, it's amazing how with that, that the student can...
Could you just step back a little bit? You're popping.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's just...
Is that better?
Okay.
Okay. So what I'm concerned about is that the student is able to make that choice and decision, and then go to the principal, and then, you know, have a conversation with the parent if the child deems so. However, it seems to contrast with the FERPA law with the Family Education Rights and Privacy Act, where the parent is able to change rights and the records. So when a teacher is beginning, and I mentioned this before, I just felt it was very important to regurgitate this, it's because communication lines are imperative as a teacher and a parent, because it's been proven, in fact, some articles have been written about the significant increase in their math and reading scores with parent involvement, you know, lack of absenteeism, classroom management skills, and if you're having a classroom, and I go to open a house, which I went to all my kids, how do I know now if this policy's in place? I know the policy. How do I know that my child, by whatever design, child's choice, there's not a file separated on it? Like, where, how do I begin? How do I trust? And I brought my kids to school, and I went to where I taught, and I thought everybody is on the same game plan. However, you know, it takes a community, it takes we, the people, to be involved in our writings and our laws, especially with our students, and people need to take time. It's tiring, however, it's well worth it, you know, and it's a lot of responsibility on people that are here sitting, you know, and the separate file, like, I don't understand. It's really difficult to comprehend, and with the 5756, it says, "Parents are eligible to have the rights." Is that it? "To have the rights to inspect and review the students' educational records maintained by the schools. Schools are not required to provide copies for reasons..." I'm just going to skip because of time. "...it's impossible for parents or eligible students to review the records. Schools may charge fees. Parents are eligible to have the rights to request that school correct records, which they believe to be inaccurate or misleading." Right then and there. Is that my time?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it, and I'm sorry if I beeped off or whatever. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from public?
Hi, my name is Jemaya Mayers. I'm currently a student at the Saraville High School and a resident of Saraville. So I have been in correspondence with Dr. Labby as well as the principal, Mr. Gruhusky, regarding our observance of Juneteenth. So Juneteenth, if you don't know, is considered Independence Day for the black community. It's similar to the Fourth of July, which is the Independence Day of America. And the Fourth of July is observed on the Fourth of July every year, and I feel as if Juneteenth should be considered, should be observed on June 19th as well. So I'm proposing, I'm proposing to have the last day of school be June 21st and move graduation to that day as well, and allow the half-day on Juneteenth to be represented as an observance of Juneteenth for several reasons brought up by my peers, such as summer jobs start June 24th for many because they anticipated school being over on the 21st. If we keep the, if we keep the half-day on Wednesday, then we will have our 180 days as required by the state. It will boost student morale and school on a Friday, you know, and the heat is absolutely atrocious in the building, especially in June. Students can finish the school year by the end of the week to avoid a three-day disruption. More family members have a better opportunity of attending graduation on a Friday night rather than a Monday night, since they would have work the next day, and it would be convenient for families traveling from out of state to be able to attend on a Friday night as well. The field will already be set up because of the middle school graduation the day prior, so that's, you know, less work for those who have to set up the field. Staff can have the week to finalize grades, collect dues, collect Chromebooks, and other end-of-the-year responsibilities, and attendance may be an issue for the underclassmen if the last day is a Monday, especially with not having school on a Friday. I hope you take these reasons into consideration and reconsider the 23-24 calendar. I have also created a survey which gets feedback from my peers regarding Juneteenth and the end of the year, and I would appreciate if you could review my survey and approve for it to be distributed to the middle school and the high school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ron Mack. I want to thank you for your service to Saraville and this school board. I know it's, you could be doing other things tonight, so thank you very much for the time you put in and what you're talking about with the students here. I'm going to talk on 5756, the most famous policy all across New Jersey. Roxbury rescinded it last night, one in a long number of schools that are rescinding it. You have not rescinded it yet. I live in Old Bridge. I'm a member of the noted traveling group. I traveled a whole 4.8 miles from my house to get here tonight. Let me say that as Americans, we are bound by the Constitution. In fact, I have one here in my hand, is the first article's the only reason that we're here and doing this tonight. Without that, we wouldn't be. The first article in the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act guarantees that even if you are not from inside the town, you do have a right to speak here. The truth is that many of us were asked by residents of Saraville and friends of ours to be here. Let me say that there's no such thing also as separation of church and state in here. You can read it in a half hour. There's no such thing. And if you can find it, I'll give you $100, but it's not in there. The separation of church and state is fiction. It's not in there. However, we would, this, page 21 is the First Amendment. "Congress shall make no law respecting the establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, abridging the freedom of speech." Who sets the standards in any community? It's the community that does. We are the community. I would like to request that the Saraville Board of Education bring to a vote the rescinding of Policy 5756. It is requested that the vote be consummated before the November 5th election. We want to let every Board of Education member declare publicly where they stand on 5756. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from public?
My name is Jennifer Woodruff, and I am a resident of Marlboro. I thank you very much for your personal time for the benefit of the District of Saraville and mostly the children. It is appreciated. I'm here to voice my opposition to 5756, the policy, because it is a bad policy and it is endangering our vulnerable children. I can't control the internet, social media, on-time influencers and predators, but I can do my part by voicing my concern at a school board meeting when there is a bad policy that needs to be rescinded. It doesn't matter that I live in another town. What matters is the safety of all children. We are affirming a lie, and in many instances, we are celebrating it. A child can't change its gender no matter how they identify themselves, or how many cross-sex hormones they take, or how many surgeries they undergo. Society has pressured us to go along with this ideology and be silent for fear of the backlash, being called the transphobe or hateful. Nothing is further from the truth. I have compassion for these kids, mostly for the girls, because they are the most affected. I don't want these young girls making a mistake that they will regret the rest of their lives. Studies show that this gender confusion occurs primarily with girls and pops up in their pre-teen and adolescent years with no signs of this confusion in their younger years. The influencers of this movement are social media platforms like TikTok, Tumblr, and Instagram. They make it very enticing to the children that are in an awkward stage in their lives, who just want to fit in, to be popular, to be part of a group. Many of these confused kids have suffered a traumatic event in their lives, including sexual assault. Many are on the autism spectrum or have a history of depression, and many have eating disorders. The problem most often is not gender confusion. Something else is going on, which needs to be addressed with proper therapy by those people who are qualified in this area and with the support of the child's parents. When a school affirms this change in gender identity, it doesn't help the child. Instead, it encourages their confused state and brings on more anxiety. Experience shows that the longer a child socially identifies as another gender, the chances are much higher that they will continue down that path, first with the puberty blockers, then to the cross-sex hormones, and then irreversible surgeries. If the child's left alone, the child will most likely outgrow the confusion by the time they're 18. The 5756 policy does not require a mental health diagnosis of gender dysphoria be met when a child wants to socially transition in school, nor does it require notification to the child's parents. Every professional medical organization encourages, if not insists, upon careful evaluation assessment by a professional health provider with parental input to be part of the assessment process.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Please rescind the policy.
Anyone else from public?
We'll look back on it and be happy.
Good evening. Dan Finn Aberdeen, father of five, grandfather of five, retired naval officer of 30 years. First, thank you, like the others mentioned. Your service to this community is appreciated, and I know what a lot of responsibility and hard work of service it is. Nobody with a shred of intellectual honesty can say that this policy offers a benefit or protection that is not already afforded elsewhere for trans kids, and certainly not the 99%. In fact, it does alienate, causes division, confusion, and is flat-out harmful for a lot of reasons. Lying to kids about the fantasy of changing sexes as a solution to gender dysphoria, or that they can create their own gender, is grotesque. Lying to parents or teaching kids it is okay to lie to parents is diabolical, and if you undermine parents in this one area, you undermine parental authority, roles, and responsibility in every other area. And affirming or celebrating a well-documented mental illness without question, without diagnosis, or any other criteria is incomprehensible. Furthermore, the policy demands we all affirm them. Affirm is synonymous with encourage and other similar words, and folks, that's pure indoctrination. Most of these kids don't even have a clinical or deep-seated gender dysphoria. Rather, it is born out of social contagion, online influence, and now our local schools, if not stopped. In fact, that is the only possible explanation for the thousands of percent increase in just a few short years. This is an agenda-fueled movement encouraging kids down this path, and people need to understand who is behind this movement. If you don't stand in the gap for these kids, many are going to be harmed emotionally and physically, and some of them are going to be suing the adults involved later on, and that is already happening, by the way. How in the world is it appropriate to put any teacher or staff in this position to practice medicine, because that's what it is, and involve themselves completely outside the wheelhouse of public education? My mother was a teacher, and I can't even imagine what she would have to say about this. Some are worried about lawsuits, but the truth is, the frivolous lawsuits from the state are not the ones you need to be worried about. Please exercise your responsibility and authority and take back local control, and please don't wait to be one of the last ones to do the right thing. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you. Anyone else from public?
Hello, my name's Alice Marie. I'm from Coltsneck, New Jersey, and I do thank you all for taking the time to come out on a Tuesday night. I know it's a lot, but I will stand up again and speak about Policy 5756.
Could you just step back a little bit from the microphone? Because it's just, it's buzzing over.
Okay. Can you, but can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So I work at a Monmouth County High School, and I'm a teacher in the high school there. And last year, there were five students who identified, I think I said last time, with changing their pronouns and identified with, identifying with a different gender than their birth gender. And then I started to investigate and understand what's going on. At first, I wanted to kind of ignore it because I said, you know, let people do what they want to do. I don't really want to get involved, but I felt a lot of teachers were retiring, and that is important for me if the opportunity comes up, that I want to tell the truth, and I need to be allowed to do that. But so I then, after investigating further and understanding that students are really, you want to protect them, because a lot of people have been detransitioning, and I just read a study today that said 98% of the students identifying as a different gender are now, this was from National Review, are now, by the time they're an adult, they change back to the gender. So I believe, as people have mentioned before, that it's a social contagion, and I want to tell you personally that at my school, because I was close friends with the secretary to the superintendent, that last year, there were five students, as I said, who had changed their pronouns. This year, 100 students in September were identifying as non-binary, meaning that they are something other than their... are something other than the traditional roles of, the traditional gender roles. I do believe it's coming from popularity, a social, as we said, social contagion, but the future holds, you know, this is growing, and it's a chic thing now. So I only have 40 seconds, but I wanted to say that I was a tomboy when I was a kid, and I, you know, climbed trees, played with frogs, caught fish, did all the, played with dinosaurs in the sand and everything, all the traditional stuff. And I'm thankful that I didn't grow up today because my family and everyone affirmed I was a girl, but nowadays, people are thinking that maybe there's something wrong with me, and other people are saying, well, you can be what you want to be. I just am here to stand up and protect, for protection of the kids, to not mislead them down a road that is going to ultimately hurt them and possibly, if they make changes, regret for the rest of their life. Okay, thank you so much, and I ask you to appeal 5756. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from public?
Hello, my name's Carolyn Mack, and I drove 4.8 miles with my husband as part of the traveling group. We're here because we do care about the kids. I am a mom of four and a grandmother of five. And whether they, these children learning this live in Old Bridge or Saverville, they're equally important, and we believe all children have value. I, I'm, I think it's unfortunate now that we have, because of the social contagion, we have LGBTQ plus-plus and cisgender, if you don't associate as that. And I think it's a detriment to the kids that we now have these labels. So I think that is downside of one of the things 5756 has introduced. Not that it wasn't there before, but it just kind of cements it. And, and we've heard a lot about detransitioners. I just wanted to tell you about one that I ran across, Helena Kirchner, a 23-year-old detransitioner from Cincinnati, Ohio, who was born a biological female and first fell gender dysphoric at age 14. She says that Tumblr sites filled with transgender activist content spurred her transition. And this, this is a quote, "I was going through a period where I was just really isolated at school, so I turned to the internet," she recalled. In her real life, she had a falling out with friends at school. Online, however, she found a community that welcomed her. "My dysphoria was definitely triggered by this online community. I never thought about my gender or had a problem with being a girl before going on Tumblr." Then she also says, this is a quote, "There was a lot of negativity around being a cis-heterosexual white girl, and I took those messages really, really personally." And then she also said that the online trans community made her feel pressured to change gender. So what's happening in school with these websites is a lot of pressure to, to not be cisgender and to be accepted, to identify with the LB, LGBTQ. So we think that the policy 5756 does a disservice to the children as a whole, whether they're kindergarten through 12th grade. And I also would like to appeal to you to take a close look at it. It does deserve your scrutiny, and to put it up for a vote before the November elections. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from public?
My name is Gerald Maglio. I'm from the Dolores Turco Foundation, located, we're located in Neptune. Our foundation, as I mentioned last time, is to protect children from abuse and exploitation, and we believe every human being is created in the image of God, so we do not discriminate for any reason, anyone for any reason. Last time I talked about the legal and the laws. Today, I'd like to talk about the research. So I'm on a national coalition that develops optimal standards for K through 12 students in sexual education, and the top professionals in sex education agree that marriage is the optimal standard for education of children. Parents are the most protective factor.
Could you just step back a little bit?
Sure.
Because you're popping. Thank you.
Okay, sorry. Parents are the most protective factor in preventing risky behaviors for their children, and separating parents from their children makes them more vulnerable to predators. New Jersey is a hub for sex trafficking, rated the sixth in the nation for the largest number of victims, and half of all sex trafficking victims are children, and the average age they become involved is 12. According to Tim Ballard, the same tactics that pedophile networks are using are now being promoted in schools. Separate children from parents, sexualize them, let them see pornography, take God out of education, and then let them consent to dangerous life-changing surgeries, which makes it easier to accept a child consenting to sex when, in fact, he or she is being raped and exploited. A goal of the World Health Organization is to normalize and legalize pedophilia. Most of the other comments I've heard before, just two other scientific, some evidence that really defies these policies, is there is scientific evidence shows that cross-sex medical treatments are harmful, and I think you've heard that. The transition or suicide claim, I'm not sure if you heard this one, that parents must choose between a live, a trans son or a dead daughter, or vice versa, is not supported by scientific evidence. In fact, the most landmark case study over 30 years has shown that those patients that have transgendered were 19 times more likely to kill themselves, commit suicide, than the regular population. Just a couple of other facts that I'd like to bring to your attention. There is no scientific research showing that children benefit from being taught in school about sexuality, transgender identity, homosexuality, or any of that. In fact, it contributes to, normalizes sex, anal sex porn, promotes contraception, contributes to STDs. You may not be aware that there are 20 million new cases of STDs every year, and half are from children, kids and young adults ages 15 to 24. I have more comments, but I guess that's, thank you for the opportunity, and thank you for your service.
Thank you. Anyone else from public?
Hi, Jemaya. So this is not what I'm here for, but after hearing everybody, I just want to make this point very clear that getting rid of that, I feel like would do more harm than good. And if they don't feel comfortable with talking to their parents about it, and they do feel comfortable about talking to, you know, teachers and guidance counselors who they spend the majority of their time with, then I think that that should be respected. It's their choice, and in this day and age, people do things that they feel they need to do, and sometimes they feel they need to do it for themselves. So I feel like taking this privacy away from them would do them more harm than good, and a lot of the facts are because of the fact that they're not being accepted by their families and their community about who they want to be and who they think they should be. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from public? Okay, seeing none, we'll close public. Can we take a vote? Go ahead.
Public's closed.
Public's closed? Okay, we're done. Do we need a response from Dr. Labby, please?
I just want to, first of all, Jemaya, great job. I want to comment a little bit on Jemaya's initial public comment with regard to the calendar. Jemaya expressed to the board earlier today how incredibly impressed I was with the email that you sent me earlier. Not only your persuasive writing skills, which are exemplary, but your, your, your great advocacy. I was just so impressed with everything about what you sent me. And Jemaya, you inspired us, if you didn't notice, on the 2024-2025 calendar. We changed that calendar because of you. So Juneteenth is going to be celebrated next year in the June 24th and 25th calendar on the 19th, and moving forward, it will be on the 19th because of you.
And Jemaya, this is Eileen Pabon Schuyler's mom. You really did, hey, how you doing? You really did make a difference because I have asked them to change that date four times, and I have been refused, so very good work there. Thank you.
And just to make a comment about the school year. This school year, we're, we're already approaching May. We only have 13, we have 13 days that we have to work with in June because of that. And because of how important Juneteenth is, Jemaya, I would never, ever consider making that a half-day. I would never, ever consider making kids come in on such an important holiday. I wouldn't do that for Memorial Day. I wouldn't do that for Veterans Day. I'm certainly not going to do it for Juneteenth. So I know that you want it, you want to get out a little bit earlier. Believe me, I don't think there's any staff member, including myself, or students in the district that want to end that school year a little bit earlier. But to do so by taking a half-day on Juneteenth, or the day we celebrate Juneteenth, is, is not the way to do it. So we are going to, we are going to move forward with the 24th, but I will say this. In Saverville, we go to school, our students go to school 181 days, and everyone knows that we used up all three of our snow days. But I have decided and asked the board in the 2023-2024 calendar to forgive one day. So that's why we're going 180 days. So we're forgiving one day for students and actually two days for staff with this 2023-2024 revision. So I hear you. I too would love to be able to end the school year on June 21st, but I won't do that by making a holiday such as Juneteenth a half-day where kids have to come in during it. So, but nonetheless, I do applaud you for your leadership and your advocacy and your incredible way of communicating and inspiring, and you did inspire me and you did inspire this board. So great job.
Dr. Labby, do you want to address anything else at this time?
No.
Okay. So we'll see you at graduation on the 24th. Okay, anything from anybody else?
Um, yes. I would like to say that for the traveling visitors, whatever they want to call themselves, you know, I don't think that kids come out as transgendered children because they want to be popular. It actually gives them, it subjects them to ridicule, mockery, and a lot of the things that you actually said, all of you, yourselves. So, you know, your message is definitely not one that I would like to, that I'm inspired by, and it even makes me more determined to protect the children of Saverville because that's the only town that I represent. And, you know, I think you really need to change your message. That's it. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I'd like to just say that the Rotary in support of the Great Bomber Cafe on April 2nd held a Free Coffee Day, where we bought everyone coffee. Unfortunately, Dr. Agles didn't show up to, for our little coffee drinking competition, but I did have a few too many coffees that day. And that's it.
And if you haven't been to the cafe, it looks incredible. We opened it up a little bit more, so you got to get down there and see the renovations that we made to it. Kudos to Mr. Naster and Mr. Comensberger for working together. It looks beautiful, Mr. Comensberger. Great work, as always.
Yes, they did a great job. Good job. More seating area.
And I think, also, we noted that Jimmy and, and the team did this all in, in a week during, during our time off. So that was an incredible job. Everyone did pull together, and by the way, the sofa got there just in time for our Free Coffee Day, so I think I might have been the first one to sit there.
There's a big surprise coming up with the Bombers Beyond Program, so we'll, just going to tease it now, and you'll find out soon.
With that?
Mr. Comensberger, we're just getting started.
Anybody else?
Franchise.
Okay, take motion to close, please. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Anybody opposed? We're adjourned.
Just clicking the whole time.